Good evening and welcome to the Roseville City Council Meeting of November 5th, 2025. Can you hear me okay? The microphone's okay. And welcome to our temporary city council chambers for the next six months or so. Thanks for your flexibility. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Thank you. We'll start with Vice Mayor Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Haudischelt.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Here. Thank you. I'd like to request Nurse Practitioner Pam if she would lead us in a pledge of allegiance. She is here for National Nurse Practitioner Week.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk to please announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council Meeting. Agendas are available in the back on the right-hand side just as you enter through the double doors. Our agenda is also posted on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the city council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. Please note that due to the streaming from a temporary location outside our regular council chambers, we will experience a brief lapse in time from one item to the next and also in calling for public comment. We look forward to returning to our city council chambers in the spring of 2026 and appreciate your patience and understanding as we work to ensure a smooth experience while in our temporary location. For items that are not on our agenda, members of the public may address the city council regarding any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our city council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes for the first segment, and each speaker will have three minutes to express their comments. If the time limitation is reached in the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments to address the council. The Brown Act does prohibit our city council from discussing, debating, or taking action on items that are not listed on the agenda tonight. For those items that will appear on our agenda, the Brown Act allows for public comment on all items that are listed, and speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item that is listed and considered tonight. Time will be monitored, and once this clock begins to blink, please know that we ask the speaker to conclude their comments. The city council encourages public participation and requests that you please be courteous during the meeting. Lastly, if addressing the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you for your civic participation and engagement. Welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you, Carmen. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Now would be the time for anyone to come to the podium there to make any comment on any item that's not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here tonight to make a public comment? Now would be your time to come forward.
Hi. Good evening. Jennifer Chapman. I did send an email about the topic, and the topic is the Arcona, Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations bylaws, which I just really feel that the council should take a look at or get council to take a look at. It is something that the council, the Arcona, is something the council is closely involved in. City staff participate in the meetings regularly. You know, Planning Commission Chair is actually a key member both of a local association, neighborhood association, as well as on the executive board. The executive board has met at a city council member's house, you know, so there's a close relationship. But the key thing is that in these bylaws, there's just a lot of concerns. You know, it's stated that it's a democratic process, but actually, there's not traditional democratic processes, such as the call for nominations is not described in any way in the bylaws. And so there becomes kind of a handpicking amongst neighborhoods. You know, and a lot of times, we are a dynamic city with people moving in all the time. And so, you know, a lot of people that would have no knowledge of these kind of groups and relationships going on. So I think nominations is something that needs to be spelled out in the bylaws clearly. For instance, I'm in a neighborhood association that is in the process of reactivating, which is great, but the bylaws are not something that people are going to have any opportunity really to really review before they're asked to vote on them. And, you know, one of the concerns that I have is that it talks about residents having a vote, but anybody that lives in multifamily rental housing doesn't really have a vote. Anybody in multifamily rental housing, not condos, but basically apartments, it's one vote, you know, for the group rather than, you know, one vote per dwelling unit. And so these are examples of things that I think are concerns that I think the council should take an interest in. A husband and wife can both serve on the board. They would have two votes, even though their household only has one vote in general matters, they would have two votes on the board as a husband and wife in the same developed property. Anyway, there's a lot of things in there that I think, you know, are relevant to all residents and businesses because the associations actually include both residents and businesses in the neighborhoods. And if you're not aware, there's actually an effort to make an inactive neighborhood association that will represent essentially half of the city because there's only about 17 or 18 active associations out of about 45 designated areas. So part of the objective seems to be to, you know, utilize people, you know, that have been involved with Arcona whose neighborhoods are going inactive, you know, typically because they can't get a board together. Anyway, there's a lot of reasons I feel like the council should engage, and hopefully we can just improve the bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to make a public comment? Now would be your time. We also have public comment at the end of our meeting as well, so you also have another opportunity. Okay, if there's no one else for public comment, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is for, or we'll start with Nurse Practitioner Week, and I'll meet you, Serene, at the podium.
Oh, this is so exciting.
It is exciting, right? All right, you're right here.
Thank you.
Sure. So my colleagues here will start us off. We have a proclamation to present to you, and we will read portions of it this evening, and then you'll have time if you want to make a comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Whereas nurse practitioners are advanced practice registered nurses with specialized graduate education and clinical training who serve as trusted frontline healthcare providers for millions of patients across the United States. And?
And whereas, just before I say that, I'm a registered nurse, and I'm real happy to be doing this. So yeah. Okay. The nurse practitioners diagnose, treat, and prescribe medications and other treatments through a compassionate, patient-centered, and holistic approach to care, improving health outcomes, and strengthening the nation's healthcare system. And?
Whereas healthcare is one of the largest and fastest-growing industries in Roseville, employing more than 10,000 people and accounting for nearly 14% of local jobs, reflecting the city's continued commitment to the well-being of its community. And?
Whereas, from the opening of the Roseville Community Hospital in 1952 to the continued growth and investment of Kaiser Permanente Roseville Medical Center and Center of Roseville Medical Center, Roseville has a strong foundation of healthcare excellence that serves hundreds of thousands in the greater Sacramento region. And?
Whereas, nurse practitioners play a vital role within this thriving healthcare network, ensuring that patients in Roseville and across California have timely access to comprehensive, evidence-based, and compassionate care. So as the mayor of the City of Roseville, I hereby proclaim November 9th through the 15th as National Nurse Practitioner Week and encourage all residents in recognizing and celebrating the outstanding service of nurse practitioners to our community. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. And you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Irene Marsh. I'm a family nurse practitioner, and I am also an assistant professor with UC Davis School of Nursing. It is truly our pleasure to be here today alongside all my hard-working colleagues. We are all very active in the nurse practitioner world, not only in California but around the world and around the country. So we're very grateful that Roseville is taking this very special time to acknowledge our profession and proclaiming Nurse Practitioner Week for next week as we celebrate our profession. And you're also welcome to attend our gala next week. And we're also very grateful for all the support that we've gotten, not just from the city council, but also for all the healthcare providers and all the other essential workers who's been supporting our profession from the very start, just based on these numbers that you've read. So thank you so much, and it's really our pleasure to be here today.
Do you want this photo real quick? Yes. Okay, we'll do real quick. We'll gather the council for a quick photo. If you want to slide up here. You get right there. There's a little.
Thank you. Should we have stuff over here? Okay. Well, Ryan, we didn't step on it.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, I found so many.
You got it? You're welcome. Thank you.
They said never mind.
Is this in the way big time?
No.
Can you get us off?
One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are in good hands tonight with all the nurses and all the firefighters here. I feel very good. Thank you very much.
We could have a medical.
Yeah, let's not.
No, 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 no bursts.
We're trained.
The next item before us is a resolution for Michael Bradley for his service to the fire department, and I will meet chief here at the podium and will present a resolution. Our chief tonight is accepted in on behalf of Michael Bradley. We do have a framed resolution that I'm sure you will get to him.
I will.
And our colleagues will start us off. I think Trace is going to start us off.
Whereas Division Chief Mike Bradley has dedicated his career to protecting the lives and property of others, earning the respect and admiration of his colleagues, community members, and the fire service profession as a whole. And whereas Mike started his journey in public safety with a deep desire to serve, earning his degrees and certifications in paramedicine and fire service. And whereas in 2005, Mike joined the Roseville Fire Department as a firefighter paramedic, ultimately serving as division chief. And?
Whereas throughout his tenure, Mike pursued professional growth and excellence, achieving multiple certifications from the California State Board of Fire Services, including fire marshal's, marshal's series instructor, fire investigator, fire prevention officer, safety officer, and chief officer. And whereas Mike's leadership extended way beyond his formal duties, he served on numerous department committees, helping to shape department priorities and strengthen operational readiness. And he continued to be the fire investigation team and the hazardous materials team, where his technical expertise and calm leadership were invaluable. And?
Whereas, as the division chief overseeing the fire, life, safety division, Mike provided steadfast leadership, guiding his team with professionalism, fairness, and a strong commitment to continuous improvement. Whereas, as fire marshal, Mike played a vital role in the safe development of the City of Roseville, ensuring that public safety remained a top priority in major infrastructure and commercial projects. And?
Whereas, Mike has been recognized through numerous letters of appreciation from both the community and the city leadership, as well as departmental honors, including the 2024 Pride of Roseville Award and the 2025 Customer Service Award. And whereas throughout his three decades of fire service, Mike's leadership, mentorship, and kindness have left a lasting impression on the Roseville Fire Department and the community he served. And?
Whereas, Mike Bradley retires after 30 years of honorable service. His legacy will continue to be felt in the department's culture, his standards of excellence, and countless firefighters and community members who have benefited from his dedication and leadership. So on behalf of the Roseville City Council, as the mayor, I'd like to commend Michael Bradley for his 20 years of exemplary service, leadership, and commitment to public safety in Roseville and the Roseville Fire Department, and he should be congratulated for his accomplishment and wished a long, healthy, and enjoyable retirement. And Jamie, please extend, please extend our, make sure he gets this video, yes, just to send our appreciation to him.
Of course, and thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We will, thank you all for being here. Yeah. All right, we will move on to the consent calendar. I'd like to ask Carmen to please announce the procedures for approving it.
Consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and approved by one motion of the city council. An item may be pulled for further discussion from any member of our city council staff or the public. At this time, no request has been made to pull consent calendar items by either staff or council members. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion tonight? Oh, I see one person.
This is the Darling Way? Or is it the parking permit?
What item is that? Um, sorry. Yeah, I don't see an item that's noted as Darling Way.
I'm sorry, it's the residential part. It's number six.
Okay. So the request is to pull Rocky Ridge Road Landscape Improvement Project? That's item six?
I think, I think that's a different agenda.
I'm sorry, it's, I've got a different agenda.
Okay, fine. Then there is no item being pulled by the public. With that, we have, the city council will consider consent calendar items three through 18. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haudischelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes. Thank you. All right, we will move on to presentation report. We'll start with item 19, Creekview Phase 5 Community Facilities District Number 1 Bond Issuance. There you are. Right. Nice guy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony, council members. Scott Petengel, Finance Director for the city. And this evening, we're providing an overview of a recommendation regarding a bond issuance for Creekview Phase 5 Community Facilities District Number 1. Beginning with some background, the purpose of establishing a CFD is to create a land-secured financing mechanism to fund the construction of authorized facilities and/or services. As an overview, this district was formed back on July 16th of 2025, and the issuance will be the first series of bonds. The total maximum authorized bonded indebtedness is up to $92 million, and the aggregate principal not-to-exceed amount is $18 million for this particular bond issuance. The authorized facilities that can be financed with these bonds are listed on this slide, and they include transportation improvements, including but not limited to Westbrook, West Park, and Blue Oaks Boulevard, as well as utility infrastructure and park and open space improvements. On this next slide, we provide some additional details on this CFD area. The project area is about 58 acres and will include 285 low-density dwelling units at build-out, and no future annexation areas are planned for this district. This CFD is located within the Creekview specific plan, which is on the northwestern side of the city and highlighted here in purple. And on this next slide shows the boundaries of the CFD district. We've included two views of this same CFD area. On the left, you can see the CFD boundary outlined in the bold black line, and on the right, we've shown an aerial image with the same boundary highlighted in red. For reference, the Westbrook Boulevard runs north-south, east of the district, and Blue Oaks Boulevard runs east-west along the southern edge of this map. So tonight, staff is recommending that council approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for Creekview Phase 5 CFD Number 1, along with the related actions and documents, and that includes a preliminary official statement, which we use to market the bonds. This concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the council have any questions for Scott? No. No, we'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this item? Now would be your time. All right, we'll close public comment. Does council have any other questions, comments? The only thing I'll say is those maps are super helpful because oftentimes, we're talking about areas that obviously are not developed yet, so I just commend you on that.
Good, thank you.
All right, unless staff has anything else, I think we're ready for a motion.
Thank you. On item 19, the city council will consider the recommendation to adopt Resolution 25-347, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds on and on behalf of the City of Roseville, Creekview Phase 5 Communities Facilities District Number 1, also known as Public Facilities, and approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and an acquisition agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, and approving the sale of such bonds and approving other related documents and actions. May I please have a motion to approve?
Pilled.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haudischelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to item 20, Campaign Contribution Limitation in the Levine Act, Roseville Municipal Code amendments. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and council. I'm Jonathan Levi, Senior Deputy City Attorney in your City Attorney's Office, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and break in our temporary council chambers. I am here this evening to present for your consideration an ordinance to introduce for first reading to amend our Campaign Contribution Limitation Code section. Currently, our code sets the limitation amount by using a $500 base value, but with a January odd-year Consumer Price Index or CPI-based adjustment for increases or decreases. As currently written, the CPI language, because of the CPI language, one reading our code is not independently able to calculate or tell very easily what the current limitation amount is. But as adjusted in January of this year and for 2025 and 2026, the limitation amount is set to be $590. Our code also includes a 15-day return period, which requires the return of any contribution amount that's received in excess of the limitation amount. For your consideration this evening, the ordinance proposes two changes. First, striking the CPI-based adjustment, leaving a clear, flat $500 limitation amount, and one that anybody looking at our code would be able to independently ascertain on their own. And the second change is to extend the return period to return excess contribution amounts from a 15-day period to a 30-day period. These changes are being proposed for a variety of reasons, including alleviating some staff burden when it comes to administering some Levine Act elements. But the primary basis this evening is really about better alignment between our code and the current state of the Levine Act. So speaking of the Levine Act, let's talk about the Levine Act just for a minute. The Levine Act is a conflict of interest recusal framework that was recently expanded to apply for the first time to local elected officials. Its primary aim is to prevent and curb pay-to-play schemes, which are said in a different way to prevent a party agent or participant from using campaign contributions to influence the outcome on discretionary items like a contract license permit or entitlement. For officials, what it means in a nutshell is an official is prohibited unless cured from participating in the consideration of a discretionary item like a contract license permit or entitlement if they've received more than $500 in campaign contributions from a party, agent, or participant in the 12 months before, while the item is pending, and for 12 months following, consideration, and final action on that item. Of note, the Levine Act was recently updated again for additional clarification, and from that, two items to highlight for you. First, the conflict of interest and limitation amount was increased under the Levine Act from a $250 value to a $500 value. And the second change was for post-decision curing of violations or the discovery of a conflict, that period was increased from a 14-day period to a 30-day period. Both of those changes are what appears in the ordinance proposed this evening for your consideration. So our recommendation this evening, this evening, we recommend that you introduce for first reading the ordinance that makes those two changes, striking the CPI language and increasing the return period from 15 days to that 30-day period, with really four goals in mind. First, like we mentioned, better alignment with the current state of the Levine Act and the law. Second, to alleviate some staff burdens when it comes to administering different elements of the Levine Act. Third, to more clearly state in our code such that anybody reading it would be able to understand the current limitation amount. And finally, to help prevent inadvertent violations for our constituents and our officials. And with that, thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Does the council have any comments or questions before we open up to public comment?
I do have a couple of questions. So what would the language, what would the, well, now let me make, if in the 2026 legislative session, the Levine Act amount has changed, how would that, would that come back to us then for an ordinance change? Or do you have it written in there that it would be consistent with the legislative action? How do you address that?
So the proposed ordinance takes out any of the adjustment language and leaves a flat amount. So if we wanted the flexibility later, if there's an increase to that threshold amount, we could certainly come back and make an easy change to the language through an additional update. But currently, the proposed language this evening doesn't have any sort of follow-along adjustment if that amount's increased.
So we sit on other things that I think should be noted, right? Will not affect me, you know, will not affect most of the council because we have a strict campaign season that starts in an election year. Some of our terms end in '26, some end in '28, and we're prevented from running again. So my question really is, when we sit in other bodies, is the $590 the amount for other bodies?
So if I understand your question?
If I'm at PCTPA.
Sure.
Is it $590 there and $500 here?
The $590 that's currently set is for the City of Roseville's campaign contribution. So if you're raising here and you receive the contribution amount, if it goes above what's currently set at $590, or what would be changed down to $500, that would affect you here. But the Levine Act does follow you for running for election. If, say, you're currently sitting on one legislative body or governing body and running for another, the Levine Act threshold would continue to follow you, which is currently $500.
Okay, it was a theoretical question because I can't raise any money, so.
Yeah.
Because I'm not running again, so.
It follows you, and so any discretionary item that you consider, if the party agent or participant had made that contribution to you for something else, it would still potentially apply to that action that you're considering for a different body.
And there's a difference between the Levine Act contribution and the gift amount?
Yes.
And the gift amount is?
The gift, the gift prohibition is?
630?
630, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we all good? Any other questions?
I had just a clarifying that I think would be helpful on the record. So the Levine Act doesn't, doesn't disallow a jurisdiction like Roseville to have a h-. to have a higher limit. In fact, many local, you know, elected bodies do have higher limits. What I'm hearing is that you're bringing it into, you know, the $500 threshold, which is just the reporting threshold, right? For, for potential conflicts.
So we can set, because of AB 571 a number of years ago, we can set a limitation amount that's almost anything that we would like. The Levine Act sets, it has a forward-looking limitation amount for a party agent and participant. And so it sets actually a limitation amount in law for somebody that comes in and tries to make a contribution, notwithstanding whatever the limitation amount is in that jurisdiction. Am I answering the question?
I think so. I just wanted to make sure it was really clear that we're just bringing our threshold into, like, the $500 language of the Levine Act to help with, you know, not potentially having conflicts of interest that aren't caught. But that, in fact, the $590 could stand as it is.
Sure.
We're just, staff is making a recommendation to align it with the Levine Act.
Absolutely. It's, that's a good point. Basically, this move puts, puts on some safety rails such that it would be a knowing and willful violation for somebody at this point to violate the Levine Act, if they did so if we aligned to the Levine Act's $500 limitation amount. And so it also serves to provide some alleviation, because currently, staff administers, there's a number of forms that we update and administer through our permitting process, our entitlement process, all of the development services processes. And then we have to keep an eye out for updating our agreements as we go along to make sure we capture Levine Act language. We have to provide a mechanism for a party agent or participant to file a form, because they have an outside obligation to make a disclosure on the record if they've made a contribution that violates the Levine Act. So there's a lot of pieces that this helps the city with. But certainly, it's not something that we have to do or need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I have, I do have one more. So to follow up on the vice mayor's, some jurisdictions have higher campaign contribution limitations. They would also, but they would have the same conflict of interest disclosure requirement at $590, let's say, regardless.
$500?
Yeah, $500. The Levine Act's currently adjusted to $500.
Okay, $500.
Our inflationary.
Regardless of whether a contribution is $2,500, $5,000, whatever, they, they would have to disclose at a meeting, wherever that meeting is, if they've received, you know, if they have a conflict. And so there's a difference between campaign contribution limits and disclosure limits for conflicts.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this item? Now would be your time to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And unless the council has any other comments, clarification, I think we're ready for a motion.
Thank you. On Item 20, the City Council will consider the recommendation to introduce for a first reading an ordinance to amend Sections 2.60, 0.65 of Chapter 2.60 of Title 2 of the Roseville Municipal Code to remove the odd-year CPI-based adjustment language and make other Levine Act-related conforming amendments. With that, can I please get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert. Councilmember Haudishaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. We have, the next item before us is a, we have one public hearing tonight. It's Item 21, Pro-Housing Designation Application Renewal. I'll open the public hearing and ask our staff to make the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernuscony, members of the City Council. I'm Greg Bitter, Planning Manager with your Development Services Department. And I'm here tonight with Lauren Hawker, Senior Planner in Development Services. And we're here to ask you tonight to authorize staff to apply for a renewal of our pro-housing designation with the State of California's Housing and Community Development Department. So I'll let Lauren do the presentation and guide you through this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As Greg says, I'm Lauren Hawker, Senior Planner, and I'm here to talk about our application for renewal. So I'm going to be going over some of the things I went over at the workshop a couple of months ago. The program was created in 2021, and essentially, it was created because over the last decade, there have been a lot of sticks adopted by the legislature related to housing production in underperforming jurisdictions, but not so much in the way of carrots. So this is the Rare Carrot Program, where it's basically, the program is basically giving people credit for their hard work and good housing production instead of only focusing on that poor-performing segment of the jurisdictions. So the application's basically a score chart card, where you're awarded points for having various types of programs and policies that support housing production. And we were one of the first 10 jurisdictions in the state to receive pro-housing jurisdiction back in 2022. The designation expires in December of this year, and so we are looking to reapply before that expiration. So again, this is an incentive program, and the incentive is getting additional points on a suite of different state grant programs. This can be really important when the city is competing with jurisdictions all over the state for grant funding, especially larger jurisdictions, who may be better positioned to propose big projects that get grant attention. So the city was rewarded $1.6 million of pro-housing incentive program funding. That was used to offset the costs of site development of the Mercy Housing Pleasant Grove Project. Only pro-housing designated jurisdictions can receive that particular grant. And of the more than 500 jurisdictions in California, fewer than 50 have pro-housing designation. And on the slide here are the different types of grant applications that you get additional points for. And it's not just housing. It's also improvements to water lines and sewer lines and infrastructure. Go back one. Transit funding, congestion reduction, safety, and of course, affordable housing. So for our application, the application was published for a 30-day review period from August 29th to September 29th, and five commenters responded during that period. Staff responded to each of these, and both comments and staff respondances are included in the application on PDF page 72. In general, the comments were either related to housing generally, not to the application, or were comments and questions about the scoring sheet, not the city's policies and programs. You all did receive one additional comment today from Harry White, talking about watershed health as it relates to homelessness and people experiencing homelessness in their creeks and waterways. And we would just say that supporting housing production and affordable housing production reduces homelessness, and so in that way does address that issue that he's describing. So to repeat what we indicated in the workshop, there are no new policies or programs proposed in our application at all. Every policy and program listed is already adopted and has been in effect for many years. And in fact, our score sheet includes the same policies it did for our first application and award. So we've completed the required process for getting our application ready to go. The attached resolution is in the form required by HCD, which asks us to affirm that we comply with various state laws and authorizes the city's representative, which would be Mike Isom, Development Services Director, to sign the application on the city manager's behalf. Staff request City Council adopt the resolution, after which staff will submit the application to HCD so that we can renew our designation before it expires next month. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have at this time.
Great. Thank you, Lauren. Staff, have any, councilor reporting to staff before we open the public comment? Would anyone like to make a comment on this item? Now would be your time to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Yeah, just, just in supporting this motion, I want to mention that we were the first city in Placer County with a pro-housing designation, so. So I support, support the renewal.
So it's a good story for the city. A motion, seeing we have something else. Close public hearing.
On Item 21, the City Council will consider the recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 25-346, authorizing an application and participation in the pro-housing designation program and authorizing the city manager to execute on this specific Roseville. May I please have a motion to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haudishaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The last public comment is upon us. Is there anyone tonight that would like to make a public comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Now would be your time. If you don't have any, we'll close public comments. Back to our council and staff, our acting city manager and our city attorney. Any comments for us?
I just want to thank staff for their effort to get us set up in the temporary location. We'll work on the little details to improve it going forward.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Haudishaw, do you want to start us off?
You know, it's a busy time of the year. I'm going to get busier, so that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Bruce.
That's just true. I have a couple of things. So I, I serve as the City of Roseville's representative on this Placer County Air Pollution Control District. And about a week ago, Monday or Tuesday, I think, the landfill started getting flooded, which actually I think you serve on, but.
I do, but I didn't flood it. Okay.
Flooded, not flooded, but a lot of comments, complaints were coming in. If you live, I'm not sure how far it extends in. I know where I live on the west side, it was extending at least up to, like, the foothill area. So kind of that western side, a lot of odor in the air. And so I think after a series of kind of exploration between the water, wastewater treatment plants and the landfill, and then the Air Pollution Control District got involved, and they identified that it was, the source of it was agriculture. So it's that time of year where I think some large, large farm areas, agriculture areas, were using live fertilizer, which was creating a lot of odor. And depending on the ways that the winds were shifting, it was going different directions. So I put some information out on social media. I know the Air Pollution Control District has also been pushing out information. I think what came of this was a recognition that while the Air Pollution Control District cannot, it doesn't really govern that. They, they can't say you can't do that. It is something, you know, we want us, we want our farms to be healthy. So it's something, you know, that, that's going to go on for probably about another week, is what I was told. And I think they're working with the ag commissioner at the county to just better coordinate between these bodies so that when residents start smelling something like that in the air, they can be a little more proactive with messaging before, you know, before we notice that there's a problem. So I just wanted to, to announce that. And then on the weekend, the council sponsored the Dia de los Muertos festivals that happened at Denios and Vernon Town Square on the weekend. And I had the opportunity to go out to the Vernon Town Square on Sunday. And it was, it was really a lot of fun to see people out enjoying lots of great music, lots of food trucks, a lot of, a lot of kind of vendors and booths out there that, that you could go around. We had our public safety, our police were out there. Butter was out there, our service dog. And so it was kind of a fun, fun activity, hopefully, some of the community. It looked like folks that were out there were having lots of fun.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Rakucci, anything to share?
Just a few things. I went to an Invest Health meeting last week, and this is an organization's on looking at how they can best help the community and different groups, nonprofits, working together. So they kind of talked about, one of the latest ones was Weber Park and making changes there, and also in lighting. And things that sometimes you don't think about, but when you ask the community, what's, what's really on your mind or something you need? Is it more food? Is it this or that? But when they said, you know, safety and, and lighting and a nice park, and there's things that they can work together and do. And so that was, that was a nice meeting to go over that. Also, I watched a team's meeting from Kaiser Permanente, and they were updating on different activities for older adults, keeping them healthy and, I would say, fracture-free, but trying not to have fractures. And that's literally for any, any age, but bones are a little bit more fragile when you're getting older. And so what they were talking about, what was happening in California and Placer County, is looking at programs where they're doing mobility exercises and your core strengthening and things like that, things that they're doing at Kaiser Hospital, but they also plan to do some in, in Roseville, non, not in the hospital, but to encourage people to not only, not be careful, just do as much as you can with your body, but just kind of be careful. I guess that's the right word. So that, that was pretty interesting. And been on a Placer County Water Agency and a Roseville meeting and going over some of the latest legislation and things that are happening and occurring to us. And Northern California Power Association meeting on electricity and issues that are facing us. And I think that, that's all of my things. And, and I think we all know that pretty soon Veterans Day is coming up, November 11th. And the good thing is, there's a lot of different activities that are happening for Veterans Day that aren't on November 11th. Because the hard thing is, everybody invites you to the same, different places at the same time. And then they're all good, and you, you can't do it all. And so there's, I know that William Jessup and, oh, what else? I was thinking of, someplace else that are having them on different, Sierra College, are having them at different times so that there's an opportunity of, of doing different things. And, and Roseville Veterans, they have it at Veterans Hall in Warrior Park. So that's what's going on, on Veterans Day.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few updates, Mayor. The Roseville Economic Development Advisory Committee met last week, and we got some good updates on the Venture Lab, new expansion projects at the Galleria, and a presentation on our corridor revitalization project and that were, it's continuing to be ongoing. The mayor and I had an opportunity to meet with our police chief and several sergeants and captains to get an update on much of the good work and, and issues they're tackling on a day-to-day basis. So that was a good update, and we appreciate that from the PB, the PD. Many of us went back to DC on the Placer Business Alliance trip, got to collaborate with many electeds and community leaders on different issues that affect not only us regionally, but upcoming projects and things of that nature. So that was good. And then Councilwoman Rakucci mentioned the Invest Health breakfast. I was in attendance as well. And I just want to give a shout out to our Economic Development Director, Melissa Iano, and several of our staff from our utilities. They presented at that breakfast and did a phenomenal job representing the good work that we do here as a city and what they do day in, day out to keep us one of the most desirable cities to live and work and play in. So thank you, guys, for doing what you do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, I forgot something that Councilmember Bernice Rakucci triggered. Monday night, I had an opportunity with others in the community to participate in the First Sergeants for Beal Air Force Base project. You know, these are challenging economic times. And there's, there's a joint effort between Yuba Sutter and Placer County to make sure that there is funding for those in need at Beal Air Force Base. We have 40% of Beal's personnel are Placer County residents. They all don't fly the plane. They service the planes. So I had an opportunity to do that and posted it on social media. So those who want to lend a hand, and I know that others are going without because of the government shutdown, but yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Lots happening. A few quick things over the last few weeks or since our last meeting. I participated as a moderator in a panel discussion with the young professionals at the Placer Valley event, Placer Valley 2025, which the city is a sponsor of that. I was able to speak with Roseville High School government students about local government and how that works. They were, had great questions. I am the representative for the City Council on our GSEC, our Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and participated in a in-market media meeting
Council, and participated in a in-market media meeting with journalists from all over that want to cover what's happening in our region and specifically have an interest in our economic development and the companies that are locating here, which helped to bring highly skilled jobs. I attended the Lincoln's State of the City address last week. Today was Sierra College's Veterans Day event, which was really well done. They had a touring exhibit, which was very moving. Let's see, I do appreciate when not all the Veterans Day events are on the same. And for Veterans Day, I, and I'm a proud Navy veteran, I was asked, this Veterans Day, I have the honor of giving a certificate of appreciation to a gentleman who is in one of our retirement facilities. He celebrates his 101st birthday this month, and I will commend him for his service during World War II, and that will be an honor. What else? Tomorrow evening is the Sacramento State Alumni Event for Placer, people who live in Placer County. That's at the Blue Lion Gallery, I'll be there, and then many other events in the future. And I know we all divide and conquer our responsibilities, and I'm very appreciative of that. So unless anyone has anything else, I'd like to adjourn our meeting, and we will see you back in two weeks. Big thank you to our staff who made this possible with all of our streaming, our audio, video, cameras, all of it. We appreciate you very much. So with that, we'll see you in a couple of weeks, and thank you for the students for being here too, from Center High School. And if you need us to sign anything, we'll do that for you. Okay.